All right, the time is six oh one. Our regular city council meeting for May seventh, two thousand and twenty four is now in session. Before we get started, I just want to mention that the, uh, the, um, sound, uh, is not dubbed in with the video on YouTube, so they're having some difficulties there. So if you see YouTube and you see our mouths moving with no, no sound coming out.
It's not your TV.
But they're trying to get that taken care of. With that, first on the agenda is Councilmember Hayward, who will lead us with the opening prayer and the pledges of allegiance to the flags of the United States and the state of Texas. Please rise.
Everyone bow. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for us arriving here safely. Thank you for the recent rain that we much needed. Thank you for this wonderful day. I ask your guidance and wisdom to be upon us as we discuss and deliberate on various issues that will impact the lives of our residents. Grant us the discernment to make decisions that are just and fair and that will promote the well-being of our community. May we continue to work together in unity and in harmony for the greater good of the city. Thank you for our wonderful staff that we have and keep them safe and press upon their hearts that they are truly appreciated. In your son's name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayward. Okay, we had a few proclamations, but we're going, we're going to do those later. We'll do the employee introductions first. First is EMS.
Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, Council, and Mr. Williams. Tonight, I'm here to introduce my newest team member. My name is Allison Gorzal. I'm the office manager. I've been with the City of Shirts for almost twenty-two years. I would like to introduce Brooke Bush. She is here, a resident of Siblo. She's been here since February twelfth, and she's almost been here three months. She's an EMS billing specialist. She is a graduate of UTS.
Texas A.M.
Texas A.M., San Antonio. And so she has her bachelor's degree from there. And so I just wanted to introduce her. Hello, I'm very happy to be here.
Well, welcome to our team.
You.
Great to see you here. Next, we have the municipal court.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. I am introducing Samantha Capiero. Samantha was born in California but not raised in California because at the age of seven, she and her family moved to Texas. Samantha received her education, some education on Northeast ISD, but completed her high school diploma at Judson. Samantha and her newly husband of four months, three months, three months now reside in Siblo in her spare time. She enjoys reading, traveling, most of her, most of her, one of her most recent trips was a surprise honeymoon to Hawaii. So welcome Samantha to the City of Shirts Municipal Court.
Mike's yours, if you want. The microphone's yours if you want to say a few words.
Thank you for having me.
Well, welcome aboard. Next, we have the Civic Center.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. It's my pleasure to introduce my new event coordinator, Dawn Williams. We were lucky to get her away from the New Braunfels team over there, so I will let Dawn say a few words as we were too busy today to work on her bike.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome, welcome to our team. Next, we have the library.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing Miguel Martinez to the library staff. He started in March as a library assistant part-time. He is Texas-born and raised. He, um, got his ma, or sorry, bachelor's degree in media studies from UNT, and he plans to continue his education in, um, working on a master's degree while working at the library. Um, and in his free time, should be as no surprise that he loves reading. He also enjoys playing with his two dogs and bouldering, right? So please welcome, join me in welcoming Miguel.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome to our team. Next, we have Public Works.
Evening, Mayor, Council. This is Michael Willis. He joined our Water Waste Water Division of Public Works back in March. Uh, what is the phrase of part of your job so far? He said, the unexpected challenges? Just about every day, huh? Favorite holiday is Christmas because it's a remembrance of the birth of Christ. Amen. Favorite sports team, football? I don't know about this one, though. San Francisco Forty-Niners. Dream vacation, tour Jerusalem. And favorite way to relax is to read.
Mike's, are yours there?
Just thank you for having me.
Well, welcome to our team. Next is Purchasing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's my privilege to be here tonight to introduce our new purchasing manager, Daniel Ellenberg. Uh, Daniel originally hails from North Carolina but has lived in many places and traveled extensively as he served the United States Army for more than twenty years. His, his experience includes comprehensive supply chain management, including purchasing, contract management, vendor and asset management, all of which will certainly serve him well in his new role here. Um, I'm so excited to have Daniel on our team as he brings both a new and fresh perspective and a wealth of knowledge to the city, so certainly value added. So please join me in welcoming Daniel.
I won't break from tradition. Thanks for having me.
Welcome, Daniel. All right, we're going to move on to city events and announcements, announcements of upcoming events. Mr. James.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just to let folks know, this Saturday, May eleventh, we have our Nature Discovery Series. That's Discover the Forest, nine thirty a.m. to eleven a.m. at Crescent Min Nature Park. On Wednesday, May fifteenth, we have the two thousand and twenty-four Police Memorial that we do in partnership with the Siblo P.D. That'll be from six p.m. to eight p.m. at the Santicos Theater. Uh, Saturday, May eighteenth, we're back at Crescent Min Nature Park for the Dark Skies and Flyer Flies event. That starts at seven p.m. Sunday, May nineteenth, EMS is having their Touch a Truck event, and that's celebrating their fiftieth anniversary extravaganza. That's ten a.m. to two p.m., and that's at the Forum Shopping Center, sort of the main entrance. And then we'll be back here for our next regular scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. James. Announcements and recognitions by our city manager, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give a shout out to a couple of our employees. We had Starla Blake was recognized by the Siblo Police Department as the Dispatcher of the Year, and Sergeant Marty Trevino was recognized by SCU CISD Education Foundation as SRO of the Year. So congratulations to both of them.
Congratulations, definitely. All right, next announcements and recognitions by the mayor. I have none. We do have a couple of proclamations, but we're going to read those after the hearing of residents. Um, so next is a hearing of residents. This time is set aside for anyone who wishes to address the city council. Each person is limited to three minutes, and we ask before addressing the council, for the record, please state your name and address. Now, we have also three public hearings, so you do have options. You may choose to speak during the hearing of residents or wait until the public hearing, or you can speak at both. The option is yours. With that, Mayor Pro Temp, please carve for speaker.
Maggie Titterington.
That was perfect. Thank you. Maggie Titterington, President of the Chamber, seventeen thirty Shirts Parkway. A few announcements, really great video we just posted on our Facebook. From May fifth, our Military Affairs Committee was there to welcome the Honor Flight veterans, and it is just so, uh, it is so awesome to see them coming off the plane, and you could hear them hooping and hollering and stuff. But if you get a chance to check out our, our Facebook, it, it is truly a great, great video. On the twenty-first of May, we have our monthly chamber luncheon, and we are having Tech Dot come out, and they're going to give us area updates about the projects, the ongoing progress if they think they're still going to meet their deadlines, and that is the twenty-first of May. You can register right now online for that. And we have three ribbon cuttings for the City Shirts coming up, two of them that same week. May twenty-second, we're going to be welcoming Mayday Pest Solutions. Their ribbon cutting is at ten a.m., and it will be at our Shirts offices at seventeen thirty Shirts Parkway. May twenty-third, at One Commercial Place, Suite one oh one, we'll be welcoming at ten a.m. in the morning Edward Jones Matt Bauer Representative. And then on the twenty-ninth, at four p.m., we're going to be welcoming G and J Contracting, which is at seventeen three oh five I H thirty-five, and that is all on our website. Uh, you all will probably already be getting the calendar reminders about that. Uh, one last thing, putting on my Shirts Historical Preservation Committee hat. Uh, we're very pleased that it's on the agenda tonight to approve two new members to our committee, which will bring us to seven council members on for that board, and we have another one pending the June meeting to be a total of eight. So we're very pleased. Uh, our, our committee is growing. We have some exciting events that are upcoming to, uh, give you another update, probably at the end of this month on. It's in July. And last, um, it was great that you all had the workshop that you did before these council uh, meet, this council meeting, and it's great that residents can come out and hear you all discussing it. Just one comment, talking about moving on Main. Uh, if, if it's the branding of the event, and I really do feel like you have branded it well, it might be in the best interest of postponing it. This is just a residence, uh, comment, uh, because you have branded it so much as what it is to rename it and move it even for a couple of years because we're having the Main Street renovations happening. I don't know, I think it kind of dilutes what, all the hard work you've already put into it. So just as a resident, I would say if you were looking for a comment, postpone it for the year, and then if you're going to have a separate event, have a separate event, but it's not the event being renamed or rebranded. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good, last name on this one, I really can't make it out, but it's Reagan. Okay.
Reagan Rowley. I'm, I wanted to, uh, seven nine nine three, Trainer Hill Road, Unit Four. Uh, I'm here to mention, ask a couple, one question of one of the members and then also point out a couple of things that, that was not brought up at the last, in the introduction of the Bear County Annexation Project or Proposal. Um, y'all made the comment that it was only going to make an eighteen-dollar difference per month. I think, uh, someone quoted that. Uh, that's for the agricultural only. And, and you need to think, to think about this real hard. Okay, when you start making us part of the city and not providing the, the services that you can't provide, uh, it's also going to add four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents for every hundred thousand dollar of our, uh, the full appraisal value of our, our homestead on that property. Now, in the, in the case of our house, we built a two hundred thousand dollar house in two thousand and ten. Y'all are valuing, or appraisal district is now valuing it just short of half a million. So we're talking more than eighteen dollars. And I heard the gasp when everybody, huh, that's not much. And we don't even, is that, was that, the question is, is it, was that on a per acre basis? That, uh, I believe it was the city manager who had threw out the eighteen dollars.
We don't have a back and forth discussion. We're just, uh, we're here just to listen to your concerns.
I'll be happy to speak to you directly if you'd like.
Just, it's very underestimated, and we don't know how you calculated that, but you can see it's going to have a big impact on us without any services. The second thing is, we, after, during the break in the meeting last time, uh, we talked with several members and also talked with, um, the, the, uh, legal, uh, the attorney, city attorney about the, you know, when we were originally signed up for the, uh, development agreement, it was to, for the City of Shirts to create codes that would affect agricultural area instead of trying to apply city codes to agricultural area. Apparently, that has not been developed, and so that you have the requirements that you cannot put barbed wire out in the country. You cannot repair without getting a building permit. So.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Ashley.
Um, good evening, City Council, Mayor, Mr. Williams. Um, Ashley, we're Q fourteen hundred, Shirts Parkway. I am the Business Engagement Manager with the Shirts EDC, and I'm also a member of this year's Leadership Corps. So I'm here just to observe your meeting tonight. So thank you so much for having me.
Kaylin Maher. I hope I said that right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kaylin Maher. I am also a part of the Shirts Chamber Leadership Corps, and I'm just observing the meeting.
Sorry, did we get the address?
Oh, it's, uh, six oh five one FM three double oh nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last on the list is Joshua Berry.
Joshua Berry, one two three seven zero, Urstein Valley. Uh, I come on behalf of the people of the Rhine Valley Subdivision. Um, I'm not here to debate the actions of Mr. Marx, as he and I have already talked extensively, but I am here to ask why we're now going through our fourth speed test, and nothing ever gets done. We need stop signs. I live on a bend. I have a child that's on the spectrum. He just darts into the street. We have children out here. We've had death children in our neighborhood, and cars are just flying down. I have a video to show what it's like coming from the direction of my house around that turn. You can't see anything, and vehicles pull out into Alsatian Way just to be able to see around the corner because the developers thought it a good idea to put, uh, stone pillars right there so you can't see anything. At the same time, I think it's rather ridiculous that I've lived in my house for five years now, and for four and a half of those, we've been trying to get stop signs to be able to be put in. We've tried to get our park fixed or the mode of the, the lawns mode or like the green belt mode and everything, and it seems like we're just pulling teeth to the point that we're just going to do it ourselves. We're, we're tired of it. How difficult is it to put stop signs in, first off? And if it was your child that lived in that area, how would you feel with car crashes going by with no disregard to people that are walking? I'm retired from the military. I'm retired from civil service. I cannot run. I can't fight. I have to still use my body as a shield to protect my kids because people are ignorant and just willful disregard of speed limits. How difficult is it for people to actually have some honor and some self-respect in this life? We should not have to come up here as citizens and beg, if you will, on our hands and knees. I understand the actions that said individual did take. I completely get it as a father of two. Truthfully, I would have done the same. I've seen it done. I've been behind the buses as when we have members of our community standing in the middle of the road, and people literally are skipping the bus. Last I checked, it's a stop sign right there on the bus, almost hitting these individuals. It's getting to the point that we are carrying to protect ourselves. I love our P.D. I got nothing but respect for them, but they can't be everywhere. And when we get told to police it ourself, so to speak, you know, within reason, we have to do what we have to do, but no parent should have to put themselves at risk to protect the children. I'll leave it with that. Have a wonderful day. Have a wonderful day.
All right, next we have the proclamations and they just arrived. So the first one is the National Police Week. Councilmember Hayward will be reading the proclamation. If I can please have the representatives join me up here at the podium.
Well, it looks nice. Hook ends, there you go.
We're making it work.
It's working. So today I have the pleasure of reading the Police Memorial and Police Week. The first one is probably, you know, sad because people have given their lives in service of duty and then Police Week to recognize what they do. And this group knows truly how I feel about them. So National Police Memorial Day, May 15th, 2024. National Police Week, May 12th through the 18th, 2024. I'm going to get the large version so I can read it. Whereas the members of the City of Shirts Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Shirts and provide a vital public service. And whereas the City of Shirts Police Department consists of 68 sworn officers, 16 professional staff members, four record clerks, 16 telecommunicators, 16 crossing guards, and nine animal control staff members. Whereas the City of Shirts Police Department responded to approximately 29,821 service calls last year. Wow. Whereas the City of Shirts Police Department hosts 15 community events throughout the year, which include Breakfast with the Blue, Community Car Seat Check, Citizens Police Academy, Junior Police Academy, Community Safety Presentations to Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, and Daycares, et cetera. Whereas it is important for all the citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. And the member of our law enforcement agency recognized their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against the oppression. And now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of Mayor Ralph Gutierrez and City Council, we call upon all citizens to observe May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day, to honor those officers who throughout their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in performance of their duties. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen. I further call upon the citizens of Shirts and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2024 as National Police Week. With appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our citizens may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community and in doing so have established themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation preserving the rights and securities of all citizens. Thank you guys for your service. We truly appreciate you keeping us safe.
Good evening, I'm Lieutenant LaCour with the Shirts Police Department on behalf of Chief James Lowery and the rest of the, the department. We want to thank you and the council and ultimately the citizens of Shirts for the great support that we received. So we want to thank you. As far as May 15th Officer Memorial Day, please on that day, remember the officers who have fallen and just say a quick thank you to yourself. We would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
If I can please have the representatives join me up here.
World Facility Management Day, May 8th, 2024. Whereas World Facility Management Day is May 8th, 2024, and this year's theme is Inspire, Integrate, Innovate. And whereas the facility management is a profession dedicated to ensure the functionality, comfort, sustainability, and efficiency of the buildings in which we live and work. And whereas the facility managers ensure the buildings and all components work properly, whether the space is in the factory, hospital, office, shopping mall, airport, museum, municipal, government offices, the facilities managers perform overseas a variety of essential functions. Security management, ground management, emergency response, disaster migration, project management, real estate management, and sustainability planning. And whereas FM is crucial part of every organization because of it ensures the places in safe comfort and health in organizations such as the International FM Association, management communities through career development, sorry, and leadership skills to empower, empower facility managers to solve challenges today and in the future. World FM Day recognizes the effort of the facility management. Anywhere in the facility management professionals influence the health, safety, productivity, and well-being of people who utilize the building environment. We are grateful for the positive impact facility managers have on the infrastructure, safety of our population and our economy. And it is fitting and improper to recognize the efforts in the organizations, individuals working to ensure a safer and development environment, healthy and happy occupants in a sustainable world. Now therefore it is resolved that Mayor Gutierrez, City of Shirts do hereby proclaim May 8th, 2024 as World Facility Management Day.
I just want to say thank you to the guys. They work really hard day in and day out to ensure the safety of our buildings, that we have air, electricity, or vice versa, sorry, it's the other way around. But thank you, Mayor, Council for acknowledging the gentleman and thank you guys for all your hard work.
I just want to say thank you for, for keeping our facilities very comfortable. And she mentioned the air, especially in the summertime, but I had a different problem in the summertime. I had two vents coming out of my wall and I was freezing when it was 100 outside. I was just cold all the time, but I thank you for fixing that problem. Appreciate it. All right, next we have the Economic Development Week and Mayor Paul Temacaluso will be reading the proclamation. If I can have the representatives up here.
Okay, Economic Development Week, May 6th through the 10th. Whereas more than 100,000 economic development or related professionals worldwide are committed to creating, retaining, and expanding top-tier opportunities that facilitate long-term equitable community growth. And whereas the Shirts Economic Development Corporation is committed to promoting sustainable economic growth, enhancing the quality of life for our residents, and attracting investment to our city. And whereas economic development professionals serve as stewards, bridging connections between community stakeholders such as residents, business leaders, elected officials, industry executives, and educational administrations to collaborate in promoting job creation, community investment, infrastructure advancements, and an optimistic future. And whereas during Economic Development Week, we celebrate the importance of fostering an environment that supports entrepreneurship, innovation, and the growth of all small, of small businesses. We are the backbone of our local economy. And whereas the Shirts Economic Development Corporation has been a catalyst to significant commercial capital investment into the community over the past 26 years. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of Mayor Ralph Gutierrez, Mayor of the City of Shirts recognizes May 6th to the 10th, 2024 as Economic Development Week and reminds individuals of the importance of this community celebration with supports expanding opportunities, bettering lives, and moving society forward.
Thank you, Paul. My name is Scott Weiman. I'm the Executive Director of the EDC. We've got a lot of exciting things to go on here at the City of Shirts. We have a wonderful couple liaisons, Councilmembers Brown and Hayward. We have a brand new board. A lot of them have kind of new and interesting goals that we're working towards and leadership with the city has always been wonderful. So thank you for all that you do to allow us to do what it is that we do. Thanks.
Our next proclamation is National Prevention Week and Councilmember Gibson will be reading the proclamation. If I can have the representatives, please join me up here.
It's an absolute pleasure to read this proclamation for the wonderful folks standing up here. National Prevention Week, a celebration of possibility, May 12th through 18th, 2024. Whereas National Prevention Week, a celebration of possibility, is a public education campaign to promote the work of communities and organizations dedicated to raising awareness about the importance of substance use prevention and positive mental health. And whereas we recognize the power of prevention and the small daily actions done by individuals combined with the actions of families and communities come together to make up the larger bold movement of prevention. And whereas the Guadalupe County Community Coalition works daily with the community and all of their partners to promote the awareness of substance use prevention and positive mental health, implementing prevention strategies and showcasing effectiveness of evidence-based prevention resources. And whereas substance use prevention and mental health promotion make a difference. We want to continue this conversation beyond National Prevention Week and we encourage you to share your unique perspective on why prevention is important to you. And now therefore be it resolved Ralph Gutierrez, Mayor of City of Shirts hereby proclaims May 12th through 18th, 2024 as National Prevention Week and urges residents to join the Guadalupe County Community Coalition in raising awareness about the importance of substance abuse prevention and positive mental health.
I want to thank Mayor Gutierrez, Mr. Williams, and the council for this proclamation recognizing May 12th through the 18th as National Prevention Week. This recognition underscores our city's commitment to youth substance use prevention and mental health awareness. My name is Katerina Eberhard and I run the Guadalupe County Community Coalition and I have some coalition members and other community members here with me today. As we accept this proclamation, let us reaffirm our resolve to prioritize prevention efforts, enhance education, and strengthen partnerships that support our youth. Through collaborative efforts with local organizations, schools, and families, we can create a network of support that nurtures resilience and empowers our youth to lead fulfilling lives free from substance misuse and mental health stigma. I'm grateful to the City Council for this proclamation which amplifies our shared dedication to building a healthier, safer community for our youth. Let's move forward with purpose and determination in fulfilling this important mission. And thank you again for your support and your commitment to our youth and our community.
Councilmember Westbrook will be reading the proclamation and if I can have the representatives. And just to mention, Councilmember Westbrook is also a firefighter, so it was our honor to have the proclamation be read by a firefighter.
The Good Book says, there's no greater love than to lay down, than to lay down one's life for, for someone else. And so that probably embodies the, the life of a firefighter, always willing to risk. So I'm proud to sort of say International Firefighters' Day, May 4th, 2024. Whereas firefighters dedicate their lives to the protection of life and property. And sometimes that dedication is in the form of countless hours volunteered over many years. In others, it is many selfless years working in the industry. In all cases, it risks the ultimate sacrifice of a firefighter's life. And whereas International Firefighters' Day is a time where the community can recognize and honor the sacrifices that firefighters make to ensure that their communities and environment are as safe as possible. It is also a day in which current and past firefighters can be thanked for their contributions. And whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on the 4th of May on where we remember the past firefighters who have died while serving our community or dedicated their lives to protecting the safety of us all and show our support and appreciation to the firefighters worldwide who continue to protect us so well throughout the year. And whereas hailing from all walks of life, they are our mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles, grandparents, neighbors, and friends. They protect us without wanting recognition or reward. In our time of need, they are there with courage, compassion, and loyalty. They are the essence of the true meaning of community. And I'm going to add one, whereas the firefighters are the heroes of all law enforcement. Now therefore be it resolved that Ralph Gutierrez, Mayor, will now call upon all citizens of the City of Shirts to observe May 4th, 2024 as International Firefighters' Day in recognition of the selfless and dedicated efforts of our fire and emergency services personnel.
John Perry Battalion Chief with the Fire Department and on behalf of Fire Chief Rogers, who cannot be here this evening, we would just like to say thank you to Mayor and the council for this proclamation and for the citizens to recognize us as we get to put the uniform on and serve the City of Shirts and those that we choose to protect with pride. Thank you all again.
These items are considered self-explanatory and information packets are provided to council and available for public viewing. These items require no separate discussion unless requested by council. Item number one, minutes. Item number two, Resolution Number 24 R50. Item number two, Resolution Number 24 R52. Item number three, appointment, reappointments, resignation for boards, commissions, and committees. Item number three has been pulled. So, we'll go with item, all right, council. Item number three has been pulled. Do I have any other consent items that need to be pulled for separate action? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items one and two?
Sound moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Hayward and second by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? If not, if you can please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have six yeas, no objections, motion passes. Okay, item number three. I pulled the item number three, which is the appointment, reappointments, and resignations for boards and commissions. We'll do this in two separate, two separate steps. First is the appointments of Sofia Rodriguez and also Maria Frey. Counsel, do I have a motion to approve the appointments?
Sound moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Hayward and second by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? If not, you can please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have six yeas, no objections, motion passes. Now, item number three, the second section, the applicant Robert Marks has chosen to exercise his right to resolute determination for his position on the Transportation Safety Commission and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and rescinded his resignation and elected for council to make the final decision. So, let us proceed with dignity and diligence related to this matter and proceed. So, the resolution actually is remove the resignation and actually put in removal of Robert Marks from the boards. Counsel, any comments, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Item number three, the removal of Robert Marks from TSAC and the Parks and Recreation Board.
Sound moved.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Watson and second by Councilmember Hayward. Any other discussion? Counsel, if you can please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have six yeas, no objections, motion passes. All right, we'll move on. We have three public hearings. The first one is item number four, Ordinance Number 24H07, conduct a public hearing, consider and possible action on proposed updates to the Asshertz Code of Ordinance, Chapter 34, Health, Article 4, Smoking in Public Places, and Article 6, Illegal Smoking Materials. This is our first reading. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Mr. Williams. Chapter 34, Article 4, Proposed Updates, Smoking in Public Places, Amanda Gunther, Sanitarian. Before talking about Chapter 34, Article 4, Proposed Updates, let's take a look at the evolution of smoking devices. As you can see, we have the first generation, which is disposable slash like. Then came the intro to medium-sized rechargeable slash refillables. Then came third generation, which you see is large-size tank slash mods. Okay. And then lastly, we have our fourth generation, which is nicotine salt slash pot mods. As you can see, smoking devices are continuously evolving. First proposed update will be updating our language, terminology, definition to match state rules throughout Chapter 34, Article 4. Definitions are to include electronic smoking device, retail tobacco store, and vaping. Next, proposed updates are addition and revision to subsection 3489, 3493, and 3494. Next are proposed revisions to subsection 3491, 3494, and 3496. Updating, which includes the removal of Section 3495, disposition of filters, and updating penalties. Last we have is the removal of Article 6, Illegal Smoking Materials. It is the city's desire to promote health and safety condition for all establishments, and the proposed revisions will bring code of ordinances into alignment with state law and be consistent with surrounding municipalities.
Thank you, thank you. All right, this item is on the agenda as an open public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council related to this subject? The mic's yours. If you can please state your name and address.
I'm Beck. My name is Katerina Eberhard, and I live at 101 Patrick Henry Drive here in Asshertz. And I'm here tonight to just educate about the dangers of secondhand smoke and secondhand aerosol from vapes, both in the workplace and in general. So firstly, I'll address the undeniable health risks associated with exposure to secondhand smoke. According to organizations such as the CDC and the World Health Organization, secondhand smoke contains over 7,000 chemicals, including more than 70 which are known carcinogens that cause heart disease, lung cancer, and other serious illnesses. Hospitality workers and other non-smokers exposed to secondhand smoke are at an increased risk for developing these illnesses. Children, pregnant women, and individuals with pre-existing health conditions are particularly vulnerable as well. Secondhand smoke is the third leading cause of preventable death in the United States, claiming the lives of approximately 42,000 Americans every year. That's about the same as the entire population of Asshertz. Concerning vaping, the use of electronic cigarettes has become increasingly more prevalent, especially among our youth. The aerosol emitted from these devices contains harmful substances such as nicotine, ultrafine particles, volatile organic compounds, and heavy metals, which can be inhaled by bystanders. Recent data shows exposure to secondhand aerosol from vaping can impair respiratory function and pose health risks like secondhand smoke. Our youth are especially vulnerable to the impacts of secondhand smoke as well. In our area, the average age of first use of tobacco or a tobacco product is 12 years old. One in 10 of our youth reported using a tobacco product in the past month. This early exposure harms their developing brains and bodies and increases the likelihood of substance use disorders and lifelong health issues. Furthermore, secondhand smoke not only poses health risks, but also exacts a substantial economic toll on our community. According to the American Lung Association, secondhand smoke costs our economy $5.6 billion per year due to lost productivity alone. For example, non-smokers exposed at work are at an increased risk for health problems. According to the organization Smoke Free Gaps, secondhand smoke-related issues cost Texas over $8.8 billion annually in healthcare. So, I just want to thank you again for your attention to this critical issue. By raising awareness and understanding the significant health risks associated with secondhand smoke and aerosols, we take an important step towards protecting our community.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. My name is Teresa Spees. I am a resident of Asshertz. I live at 5749 Bill Haas. And I will take a moment real quick to just shout out to the police on fire who helped my neighborhood today and the links that seen a kills. It was a crazy day for my neighbors and my family, so we don't need to wait until the National Week to say thank you to those brave folks who helped out today and do so in our community all the time. I'm here today wearing two hats. I am a mom and a wife, and I live in the City of Asshertz, and so I'm very proud that y'all are considering this ordinance that gets rid of some of the exemptions in some of our businesses that we're still allowing tobacco, but also, and more importantly to me, also includes vaping, because that chart of all the generations of devices that are out there, that's what scares me as a mom. There are so many things that are changing, and vaping is an epidemic for our kids, and I think that this is a really bold step that y'all are taking to make sure that our city, with this ordinance, this would be a tobacco, a comprehensive tobacco-free ordinance. And so, you would join many other cities throughout the state who are taking this step to move into the next century and really protect our, not just our young ones, but everybody against secondhand smoke. So, thank you for doing that. The other hat that I'm wearing today is I am the Executive Director of the American Heart Association locally, and so we are, our mission is to be a relentless force for longer, healthier lives. So, I just want to thank you for taking this step or considering taking this step to join us in that mission. So, I do welcome you working more with the American Heart Association and other things that we do. And again, my name is Teresa Spees, so thank you so much for this consideration tonight.
Mayor Gutierrez, members of the City Council, my name is Sarah Stafford. I'm a board-certified pediatrician at Northeast Pediatric Associates, and we work out of 5,000 Asshertz Parkway here in Asshertz. As a pediatrician who sees Asshertz families every day, I strongly support the proposed updates to our city's smoking ordinance that you will consider this evening. Your leadership and support on these updates will improve the health and quality of life to everyone in Asshertz. While the damaging health effects of smoking are well-known, what is overlooked is the impact that secondhand smoke has on people who have made the choice not to smoke. Every year, 42,000 Americans die from preventable disease such as heart disease and lung cancer due to their exposure to secondhand smoke. And the good news is that updated smoking ordinance, if passed, will ensure all Asshertz residents are protected from dangerous indoor exposure to secondhand smoke while at work. As a doctor, I'm proud to work in the City of Asshertz, a city that prides itself on being family-friendly and promoting health. Please support this updated smoking ordinance, because we're going to join the over 100 Texas cities that have already passed similar ordinances. I just want to say from personal experiences as a pediatrician, we used to start talking to kids about smoking and vaping when they were in high school. I recently had a 10-year-old tell me that they were offered a vape in their public school bathroom. So, this is not just like hypothetical, this is happening, and it's happening to kid at very young ages, they're being offered vaping and cigarette stuff much younger, and it's really being marketed to them. So, if we're being really honest, this is very real, and it's happening every day. And so, it's something that's become very real in my life, and this is something you guys can really take charge of today. So, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name is Marcus Kavanaugh, and I live at 10418 Connel Pond, and I have a prepared statement from Dr. Dean. He's a retired pediatric pulmonologist, and he says that he's concerned with allowing smoking in public places is the impact that secondhand smoke has on children with asthma or individuals with sensitive lungs. Secondhand smoke is an inhaled irritant that can irritate the lining of the lungs with children with asthma. Children with asthma have easily irritated lungs on the basis of allergy predispositions. Inhaled irritants like tobacco, smoke, vaping, or even poorly ventilated rooms can expose, or exposure to external environment pollutants can trigger asthma attack. Forty-four percent of children with asthma have uncontrolled asthma. This means that the lung function can dip to critically low levels that are unrecognizable to children or parents. Additionally, inflammatory triggers such as tobacco, smoke, vaping, or pollution, or exposure to high levels of allergic irritants can further inflame the lung lining and drop the lung function to systemic levels where the child is coughing with exercise or sleep disruption due to coughing. This may lead to asthma, an asthma attack that the parents must go to the emergency room to control. All asthma attacks have the potential to lead to life-threatening events. On average in Texas, 10 to 15 children die from asthma attacks on a yearly basis. These deaths are preventable. Children with asthma die at the same frequency as children with moderate or severe asthma. This is because the lung function dropped to critically low levels without obvious outward changes. There are critical signs of poor control, but parents are not educated properly on the symptoms of poor control. If the child requires a quick relieving medication like Arbuterol, unscheduled twice a week, awakens twice a month from sleep with a cough, or has exercise limitations requiring Arbuterol frequently, the child is not well-controlled. It's difficult for the primary care physician to manage asthma in the best of conditions, so it's important that community help these children and adults with asthma or other lung problems such as chronic lung disease and minimize the irritants that these susceptible individuals come in contact with while enjoying public events. There's another solid irritant that accumulates in public places with tobacco smoking that children do not have to be exposed to directly, but contributes to inflammations in the lungs. This irritant is called third-hand smoke. These are the particle residue of tobacco that settles on the furniture and walls of an establishment. This residue is picked up on the clothes and the hands of people in the room. It's brought to the home of the child or adult with asthma or sensitive lungs. It's transferred to the dust and environmental atmosphere, and is breathed in from the bed coverings of toys or dust on stuffed animals. This solid irritant that contributes to inflammation on the lung, leading to unexpected flare-ups of asthma due to constant exposure of inflammation in the home and environment. Thank you for your time.
Mayor Gutierrez, members of the council, my name is Jerry Savedra. I'm with the American Heart Association. I'm at 4847 Limestonewell Drive in San Antonio, Texas. Excuse me. I'm here also on behalf of the Smoke Free Texas Coalition, which involves the American Cancer Society, the American Lung Association, Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, and a bunch of other national health organizations. I did want to say that we 100% support the updates that are recommended in the amended ordinance tonight. We have reviewed the ordinance, and all the updates align with a lot of the best practices and what most cities consider now 100% comprehensive, so we're excited for Asshertz to have an ordinance that meets current national standards. We reviewed it, and there's one section that I did want to just bring to your attention for possible conversation, and that's around the penalty section. Currently, it states, you know, an offense, the first violation is $200, and a second offense for $500. One potential thing to consider is it doesn't distinguish between if it's a business that is continuing to allow smoking, or if it's just an individual who's happened to smoke in a place that's not, or they're not supposed to be. And in general, for the public health ordinances and codes, we're trying to move away from law enforcement penalties and enforcement and be more around code compliance and for folks that do the inspections for restaurants and bars and to make sure that, you know, they're washing their hands and that more of the health, public health perspective, to be more of a civil penalty and not have, you know, individuals with criminal records because of these issues. So, just wanted to highlight that if there's any clarity or any discussion around whether or not to make a distinction between that, and if there are penalties, highly recommend for them to, again, be civil penalties and not criminal to the extent that that's possible. But just wanted to point that out, but appreciate it tonight, and definitely want to thank you for your leadership on this.
Is there anyone else who would like to, who would like to address the council? Going once, going twice. All right, public hearing is closed. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. No discussion. All right. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 24H07?
Sound moved.
Check.
Have motion made by Councilmember Hayward, second by Councilmember Brown. Any other comments? If none, if you can please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have six yeas, no objections, motion passes. Thank you. Right, we'll move on to our next public hearing. Item number five, ordinance number 24S18, conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately 1.8 acres of land from predevelopment district to single-family residential agricultural district, R1, I'm sorry, RA, known as Bear County, property identification number 308385, also known as 12396 Schaefer Road, City of Asshertz, Bear County, Texas. This is our first reading. Ms. Marcus, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. I'm Daisy Marquez with the Planning Department. Ordinance 24S18, zone change from predevelopment to single-family residential agricultural district on Schaefer Road, approximately 1.8 acres. So, here is the subject property outlined in green. It is at 12396 Schaefer Road. It has an existing single-family home. Are you guys able to see it on your screen?
Are you guys able to see it on your screen? It's back. Okay. The subject property has an existing pre-development, pre-zoning, and they are proposing single-family residential agricultural RA. Just to give you a better view of the property, FM1518 is over here to the left, and this is Schaefer where it bends. To the north, it is the City of Shirts ETJ, has a lot of single-family homes that have been there for a while. To the south is a larger property that is still pre-development and is undeveloped. To the east, the property is pre-development and is undeveloped. And to the west is right-of-way, also known as Schaefer Road. On March 20th, we sent a total of 10 public hearing notices. We received phone calls just kind of asking what was going on, what were they proposing, and we received zero responses in opposition, seven in favor, and zero neutral. And one sign was posted on the property. And on April 3rd, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, and we posted in the San Antonio Express on April 10th. So, in UDC Section 2154, a zone change is required to establish the use of land and the development associated with the proposed zoning classification for the purpose of establishing and maintaining sound, stable, and desirable development. The proposed zone change to single-family residential agricultural district per the letter of intent is for the applicant to pull future building permits. When evaluating zone changes, we look at UDC Section 2154D for the criteria of approval, and I will be going through all of these. So one, whether the proposed zone change or zoning map amendment implements the policies of the adopted comprehensive land use plan, including the land use classification of the property on the future land use map. This map may look different from what you've seen before because we are using our new comprehensive land use plan that was adopted recently by y'all. The proposed single-family residential agricultural district does implement the policies of the adopted comprehensive land plan. The comprehensive land use plan classifies the subject property and area as complete neighborhood. The intent of complete neighborhood land use designation is a general area characterized by a mix of housing options with supporting land uses, but when considering the appropriateness of housing density, factors such as roadway classification and conflicts among land uses should be considered. So the proposed single-family residential agricultural district is compatible with the comprehensive land use plan designations as per statement of purpose and intent from UDC Section 2155. And the intent of single-family residential agricultural district is to provide a district suitable for minimum half-acre lots where development may be premature. The surrounding properties include single-family homes and some agricultural uses that are within the City of Shirts extraterritorial jurisdiction, with some still maintaining pre-development district since their annexation. And as you can see, here is the subject property pointed out with a star. Two, whether the proposed zoning changes on a map amendment promotes the health, safety, or general welfare of the city and safe, early, efficient, and helpful development of the city. As part of promoting health, safety, and general welfare, the city should encourage development compatible with surrounding uses, utilizing standards and transitional uses to alleviate negative impacts. The chosen single-family residential agricultural district dimensional development standards as stated in Section 2157A of the UDC are compatible with what is in the surrounding area. Three, whether the uses permitted by the proposed change in the zoning district classification and standards applicable to the such uses will be appropriate in the immediate area of the land to be reclassified. Yes, the permitted uses in single-family residential agricultural district are appropriate within the immediate area of the land to be reclassified, and the purpose and intent of single-family residential agricultural district is to provide areas in which agricultural land may be held in such use for as long as practical and reasonable, with minimum half-acre lots, and where development may be premature due to lack of utilities, capacity, or services as per UDC Section 2155. Four, whether the proposed change is in accord with any existing or proposed plans for providing public school streets, water supply, sanitary sewers, or other public services and utilities to the area. The entry point for the subject property is on Schaefer Road. Schaefer Road is a secondary arterial with a 90-foot right-of-way. To the south of the subject property, Raf Burnett, is a planned secondary arterial with a 90-foot right-of-way and is also known as the Planned East and West Connector. And the subject property is currently serviced by the City of Shirts for Water. A public hearing notice was mailed to the Shirts Volo Universal City Independent School District to notify them of the proposed zone change, and included as attachments to the staff report with the most recent demographic reports for SEUCISD, as well as the most recent 10-year campus forecasting presentation. The City of Shirts Police, Fire, and EMS departments have indicated they do not have any concerns regarding the proposed rezoning requests or their ability to provide services. Five, whether there have been any environmental or economic changes which warrant the requested change. When the property was annexed, the property was established as pre-development district. The intent of the pre-development district is to be a temporary designation for existing uses or newly annexed properties. The applicant would like to pull building permits for their home, and since pre-development is simply a placeholder, a zone change is required for them to pull building permits. Six, whether there's an error in the original zoning of the property for which the change is requested. There was no error in the original zoning of the property. The property has been pre-development district since it was annexed into the City of Shirts in 2011 with ordinance 11822. And pre-development district is simply just a placeholder, and the property along with others in this area and around Southern Shirts were given pre-development district instead of zoning each individual property. Seven, whether all of the applicant's back taxes owed to the city have been paid in full. This does not impact the first reading at City Council. And eight, whether other criteria are met, which at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council are deemed relevant and important in the consideration of the amendment. Staff has ensured all UDC requirements have been met for the proposed zone change, and at this time have not received any special consideration from the Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council. So the proposed zone change to single-family residential agricultural district is compatible with the comprehensive land use plan and is appropriate within the immediate area of the subject property. Thus, staff recommends approval of ordinance 24S18, and the Planning and Zoning Commission met on April 4th and made a recommendation of approval with a 6-0 vote. Any comments or questions? And I believe the applicant is still here if you have any specific questions for him, but he doesn't have a presentation.
All right. Well, before I open it up to, for public comments, if the applicant would like to say? No? All right. All right, is this a, a public hearing? Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in referencing to this subject? Going once, going twice. All right. Public hearing is closed. All right, council, floor is open for discussion. Councilmember Brown.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 24S18.
Second.
Have motion made by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? If none, please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have six yeas, no objections, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to item number six, ordinance number 24S19, conduct a public hearing and consider a request to rezone approximately three acres of land from pre-development district to single-family residential agriculture R-A, a portion of Bear County, property identification number 308402, also known as 11627 Voc Pass, City of Shirts, Bear County, Texas. Okay, this is our first reading. Floor is yours, Ms. Marcus.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, Mr. Williams. Ordinance 24S19, zone change from pre-development to single-family residential agricultural district on Voc Pass, approximately three acres. So here is the subject property. It's outlined in green. The address is 11627 Voc Pass. It has an existing single-family home, and the current zoning is pre-development, and the proposed zoning is single-family residential agricultural. So to the north of the property, we have property zone, pre-development district. Again, they're single-family residential with agricultural uses. To the south, we have City of Shirts ETJ. To the east, we have a private right-of-way. And to the west, we have manufacturing district heavy M2 that is undeveloped. On March 20th, we sent a total of seven public hearing notices. We received zero in opposition, zero in favor, but one neutral, and one sign was posted on the property. On April 3rd, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing, and the public hearing notice was posted in the San Antonio Express on April 10th. So in UDC Section 2154, it states that a zone change is required to establish the use of land and the development associated with the proposed zoning classification for the purpose of establishing and maintaining sound, stable, and desirable development. I'll give it a second so y'all can see. The proposed zone change to single-family residential agricultural district per the letter of intent is because the applicant is seeking to remodel their existing home. Again, kind of like the previous zone change, they're in the same situation. They were given pre when they were annexed, and now they're coming in and doing the right thing so they can pull building permits, and this property has been in their family for generations. So again, when we look at zone changes, we go through UDC Section 2154D, the criteria for approval. One, whether the proposed zone change or zoning map amendment implements the policies of the adopted comprehensive land use plan, including the land use classification of the property on the future land use map. The proposed single-family residential agricultural district does implement the policies of the adopted comprehensive land plan, and the comprehensive land use plan classifies the subject property and area as complete neighborhood. The intent of complete neighborhood land use designation is a general area characterized by a mix of housing options with supporting land uses, but when considering the appropriateness of housing density, factors such as roadway classification and conflicts among land uses should be considered. The proposed single-family residential agricultural district is compatible with the comprehensive land use plan designations as per statement of purpose and intent from UDC Section 2155. And the intent of the single-family residential agricultural district is to provide a suitable area for minimum half-acre lots where development may be premature. And the surrounding properties are pre-development district, and the subject property is at the edge of the City of Shirts extraterritorial jurisdiction. Two, whether the proposed zoning change or zoning map amendment promotes the health, safety, or general welfare of the city and safe, early, efficient, and helpful development of the city. As part of the promoting health, safety, and general welfare, the city should encourage development compatible with surrounding uses, utilizing standards and transitional uses to alleviate negative impacts. The chosen single-family residential agricultural district dimensional development standards as stated in Section 2157A of the Unified Development Code are compatible with what is in the surrounding area. Three, whether the uses permitted by the proposed change in zoning district classification and the standards applicable to such uses will be appropriate in the immediate area of the land to be reclassified. Yes, the permitted uses in single-family residential agricultural district are appropriate within the immediate area of the land to be reclassified, and the purpose and intent of the single-family residential agricultural district is to provide areas in which agricultural land may be held in such use for as long as practical and reasonable, with minimum half-acre lots, and where development may be premature due to lack of utilities, capacity, or services as per UDC Section 2155. Again, the majority of the surrounding properties are pre-development district and are used for single-family residential and agricultural uses. And additionally, the southern portion of the property is adjacent to the City of Shirts ETJ. Four, whether the proposed zone change is in accord with any existing or proposed plans for providing public school streets, water supply, sanitary sewers, or other public services and utilities to the area. The existing access point for the property is off of the existing Voc Pass. Voc Pass is a private road and is not maintained by the City of Shirts. The subject property currently uses an onsite septic system and is serviced by the City of Shirts for Water. A public hearing notice was mailed to SEUCISD to notify them of the proposed zone change, and included as attachments to this staff report with the most recent demographic report for SEUCISD, as well as their most recent 10-year campus forecasting presentation. The City of Shirts Police, Fire, and EMS departments have indicated that they do not have any concerns regarding the proposed rezoning requests or their ability to provide services to the area. Five, whether there have been any environmental or economic changes which warrant the requested change. Again, the applicant would like to renovate their existing home, and the pre-development district is simply a placeholder and requires a zone change for construction and building permits, et cetera. Six, whether there's an error in the original zoning of the property for which the change is requested. There was no error in the original zoning of the property. The subject property was annexed into the City of Shirts in 1974 with ordinance 74A24. Pre-development district is a placeholder, and the property along with others in this area and around Southern Shirts were given pre-development district instead of zoning each individual property. Seven, whether all of the applicant's back taxes owed to the city have been paid in full. This does not impact the first reading at City Council. And eight, whether other criteria are met, which at the discretion of the Planning, Zoning Commission, and City Council are deemed relevant and important to the consideration of the amendment. Staff has ensured all UDC requirements have been met for the proposed zone change, and at this time have not received any special consideration from the Planning and Zoning Commission or City Council. The proposed zone change to single-family residential agricultural district is compatible with the comprehensive land use plan and is appropriate within the immediate area of the subject property. Thus, staff recommends approval of ordinance 24S19, and the Planning and Zoning Commission met on April 4th and made a recommendation of approval with a 6-0 vote. Comments or questions? And the applicant is not here.
Thank you. Okay, so the applicant's not here? All right. This item is on the agenda as an open public hearing. Is there anyone in attendance who would like to address the council in reference to this subject? Going once, going twice. All right. Public hearing is closed. Council, floor is open for discussion. Mayor Pro Tem McEluso?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have motion to approve 24S18 by Mayor Pro Tem McEluso, seconded by Councilmember Watson. Any other comments? None? You can please cast your vote. We can publish the vote, please. We have six yeas, no objections, motion passes. All right. We do have a closed session. The City Council will meet in closed session under Section 551.087 of the Texas Governmental Code. Deliberations regarding economic development negotiations, closed meeting. The governmental body is now required to conduct an open meeting, one to discuss a deliberation regarding commercial financial information that the governmental body has received from a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have, locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the governmental body, and with which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations, or number two, to deliberate an offer of financial or other incentives to a business prospect in reference to Project E-84. And I got notice that this, item number eight, is going to be postponed until further notice, so no action is required. So we'll skip on to item number eight, no action is required. We'll move on to item number nine, and item number nine, monthly updates. And item number 10, neighborhood services. These are information packets that were provided to council and available for public viewing at our website, shirts.com. With that, council, any updates or information requested from staff?
I would, do I just say it?
Yes, Councilmember Watson?
I would like to see if we can do a increase to PD certification pay and get that on the book, maybe a workshop, and then maybe another look at the comp study for pay rate on certain departments, maybe for the veterans, the more established employees, maybe just another look, a discussion.
She, she's requested.
Certification pay for the police department, and then what was the other one?
Another comp study?
Not another one, just another discussion regarding some of the pay rate.
Okay, I'll get with you, maybe we can clarify.
All right, Councilmember Hayward.
Wouldn't we have that discussion when we have our budget meeting?
Typically, that would be something we discuss through the budget process. Well, we are currently working on, well, certification pay citywide.
Right.
And that is something we intended to bring back through. It's something we've included in the budget this year, Craig. Or, so we're.
So I'm wondering if we can wait till we have the budget to do that instead of a separate workshop? Councilwoman?
Well, we are currently, we're working on a certification pay program that we intend to bring to the council soon, but I'm not sure.
I just wanted a date, so it doesn't, you know, kind of sit on the back burner or anything. I was just kind of, maybe we could look at it and talk about it at the budget, but I wanted to like a date, just moving forward.
Sure.
Okay. If you can go with Councilmember Watson and give more.
That's fine. I'm good.
We'll be bringing it back for approval, for council approval to.
For budget?
To implement. No, I believe we put money in the budget for it this year. No, maybe not. There it is.
There it is. Okay, can y'all hear me? So for the certification.
So for the certification, no. The one that was in the budget was for the...
Job progression.
The job progression, yes. But the certification, that is something that we'll be looking at and probably will be part of an expanded program discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Would that be in August?
We have a retreat August 2nd?
Yes, August 2nd.
All right. Any other items? All right. Any possible items you'd like to place on the future agenda? Okay. Announcements by councilmembers. Mayor Pro Tem Macaluso?
I have nothing to share.
Councilmember Watson?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Gibson?
I attended the Northern D Light's ribbon cutting, and it was fantastic. You should, everybody should go out there and try their homemade cinnamon rolls.
Councilmember Hayward?
Yes, I attended the volunteer banquet. We did a tour around Europe, and I think it turned out fantastic. And I'd just like to thank the city secretaries for doing such a great job with that. I did the TML IRP board meeting. The more I go, the more I understand the insurance industry and how it works and why things are the way they are. I did a ribbon cutting. It was actually in the Sibolo ETJ, and it was a souffle café, and I've heard nothing but raving things about it. I did the TML Small Cities Conference in Granbury where our own city attorney, Dan Santi, did a presentation. Kind of got me in trouble, but he's... And then I did the chamber open and volunteered, and when I left, no one had, I was doing the hole-in-one, and nobody had did the hole-in-one to win the Mercedes, so I still don't know if anybody won the Mercedes. It was safe? Okay. Spoke with the Shirts young leaders about our leadership journey, and that is all.
Councilmember Brown?
I had an opportunity to, with the SSLGC, attend a great presentation on the Post Oak landfill, and although it was very controversial over the last couple of years, it's really a needed, necessary, and well-run operation out there if anybody's interested. Good info.
All right. With that, the time is now 7:25. We stand adjourned.